Well, it's 2:00. Brunswick News is President and Accountant for, so I guess we can begin our meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to our work session this afternoon, and I'd invite you to stand for the invocation led by County Manager Hours, followed by the pledge by me.
All right, let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we do thank you for the stay and the beauty of it. We thank you for the freedom we have to gather this afternoon and to discuss issues affecting Glen County. And I pray for wisdom for the Board of Commissioners, that you would just be with them, help them to understand each issue, and help them make the decisions that would be pleasing to you and beneficial for our community. And finally, we thank you for those men and women who are here in our nation and around the world who are protecting our freedom. We also want to thank you and ask for your protection for our first responders here in Glen County. We thank you for the amazing work that they do every day. We give you thanks in Christ's name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion and consideration on voting on the following. The first item on the agenda is comprehensive plan. Courtney, you want to take the podium there?
Good afternoon. And I have a short presentation for you on the comp plan, and then I'm willing to discuss any questions or comments that you might have on it. Just to start, just to review the requirements for comprehensive planning, of course, the rules for developing a comprehensive plan for local government are established by the Department of Community Affairs. And they establish also a timeframe for local governments in Georgia to adopt their plan and to update their plans. Plans are updated every 10 years, and you're required to adopt your updated plan by October 31st, which means that there's a process the DCA lays out to get to the point that you are able to adopt it that requires going through the public hearings that we're going through now, the submittal to DCA. They have time to review it, provide comments. You can then address their comments, and at that point then you can adopt it. So all of those things, and I'll go over this later in the presentation, need to happen before October 31st. Failure to adopt the plan by that date can result in a loss of qualified local government status, which can impact your ability to receive grants and loan funding by the state, amongst other other issues. So the general outline of this plan, which follows the requirements established by the DCA, is as follows here. We have some introductory information in the plan. We go through what the scope of the work that has been completed so far. We talk about community engagement and all of the different avenues we have for public involvement. And then we get into the strategic vision. That includes a vision statement as well as goals and policies, and an analysis of quality community objectives, which is a stick department. We identify needs and opportunities. Then, of course, there's a land use section that not only looks at your existing land use, but also lays out a strategy for future land use. We cover transportation. And then, of course, all of this information really boils down to the community work program, and that's where the Rover Beats the Road. That is the specific list of action items that have a priority status, a schedule, where they assign responsible parties, and provide a potential budget and funding source. There are also addendums that, because and as we saw that the plan that you have in front of you is over 120 pages long, but we tried to piece things. It's very difficult. There's a lot of information. It's a large area that we're trying to address. But information that we could not include in this document, you'll find in the addendums, including all of the summary of all of the public involvement in that addendum, as well as another addendum that covers the data assessment, all the census data and all of the data analysis we did leading up to this planning process. So this is the process itself, a quick visual. It included an initial data gathering, and that's where that data assessment data, you can find that, a comprehensive public involvement process. That information from those two sources were utilized to develop the visions, goals, needs and opportunities, the future land use strategy. Again, that information then was used to create the work plan to achieve that vision. And then a future item that is going to be recommended, or has been recommended in this plan, is future ordinance updates. That's not part of this process. That is part of a future process, but recommendations in this plan will be used to guide that ordinance update process. So the data assessment itself looked at these various elements. It included population projections, housing, looking at educational attainment, household income, a variety of demographic elements, as well as looking at community health assessment, which is fairly new. Most comprehensive plans 10 years ago weren't looking at that, and some economic development data as well. The public involvement process included two steering committees. And these steering committees were made up of 17 citizens each. One was for the mainland incorporated area. One was for the islands. And these citizens put in a tremendous amount of work on this document, and I'll go into that in a second, but they really were the, they steered the process. We brought information to them, and it was as representatives of the community, they took that information, they interpreted it, and they developed, and helped the county develop this vision that you'll find in the plan. There's also a community survey. That was a general survey. You could do it online. You could do it, our copies were available to citizens at City Hall. This was designed to encourage a very wide participation, widespread participation throughout the county, because, you know, people need to participate at varying levels with whatever available time and interest they have. So we wanted to provide multiple avenues for participation. There were interviews, direct interviews, and these were conducted by steering committee members, where they actually went out and identified steering stakeholders and interviewed them. We had informational handouts. There were several open, two open houses where citizens were invited to come in and provide direct input on elements of the plan. And then, of course, there's public hearings, one of which occurred at the beginning of the process, and the other one which will occur on Thursday. And, of course, then there was a website that included information and an email that allowed for direct public comment. So the steering committee makeup, there were 17 total members that were appointed to each committee. Seven members on each committee were selected through a drawing selection, which means that they provided some demographic information. They were chosen to better represent the community in terms of age group and race and gender. Then there were also a board of commissioners selections. Each of you got to appoint one member to each of the boards. And then, of course, three planning commission members were selected from the Islands Planning Commission, as well as the Mainland Planning Commission. There were five individual meetings for each of these committees. So the Islands Steering Committee had five individual meetings as did the Mainland Committee, and then there were two joint meetings where they got together to pool their input and develop a unified plan. So the survey, the community survey, there were 1,100, over 1,100 respondents to this survey, which although not randomized, is a statistically significant number of people. 92% of the people who responded considered Glen County to be their primary residence. 50% of the people that responded have lived in the county for over 15 years. 83% of the respondents are homeowners. And 45% of the respondents reported that they worked, currently worked or own a business in Glen County. 55% of the respondents lived on St. Simon's, 31 in unincorporated mainland, and 8% in Brunswick. 26% are retired, 21% work in Brunswick, and 18 work in unincorporated mainland, and 25% on the islands. This is one of the questions. There was a multitude. There were over three questions that we asked, but just to give you an example, you know, there's a lot of, sometimes, I should say, sometimes there's talk about differences between the island and mainland. And what we found was very interesting was that the results of the survey, when compared with island respondents versus mainland respondents, were often very similar. So you can see in this question that when asked why you live or grow own property in Glen County, the top five answers that each group selected had four of the same answers: quality and pace of life, general aesthetics, and attractiveness of the area, access to the natural environment and activities, and recreational activities that are available here. Both groups put these in their top five. If you want to have, if you want more information about any of the public involvement, including the survey, then that would be in the public involvement addendum. So we have a complete summary of that in the addendum. There were 45 stakeholder interviews conducted by steering committee members. Some of you might have actually given an interview. These were the two open houses that were held last November, and, of course, the public hearings that I talked about, and the rest of the public engagement opportunities. So all of that boiled down to the vision. And the steering committees recommended that the county adopt a shared community vision. That's been adopted by a lot of organizations that have done planning work within the county. You know, because not only does this vision statement express what they lead to be the vision of the county, but also because it shows the intent to coordinate and cooperate with other agencies who also adopted this vision. But they also wanted to have a unique vision statement for this comprehensive plan. And I'll go ahead and read that, and that's, "Glen County's quality of life, character, culture, and natural beauty are valued and protected by its citizens. Offer an attractive destination for its visitors, and foster diverse economic activities. And its residents are actively involved in and benefit from the achievement of economic, social, and cultural success for all of Glen County." They also had a mission statement in terms of the mission of this plan and what this plan is meant to achieve. And that was, "A comprehensive plan embodies a forward-thinking vision and specific actions for future growth and strengthening of Glen County and its diverse communities. Protects our quality of life and resources, and is embraced by the citizens and utilized by county leaders and staff in their ongoing decision-making for Glen County." To support this vision statement, there were goals and policies that were identified. These are the seven major goals that were identified as part of this planning process. Needs and opportunities, and I'll go through this, and we identified these opportunities as a group, as they related to each of the different planning elements. And so if you go through the plan, you'll find that there's numerous needs and opportunities, but they were grouped into major trends or major ideas. And that's what I'm going to present to you here, which is under economic development. A lot of the needs and opportunities related to business and industry recruitment and retention, scaled workforce of county residents, jobs, and tourism is an economic driver. Under land use, looking at a new approach to land use, effective development regulation and resource preservation. Housing included, looking at housing options on the mainland, appropriate residential development on St. Simon's Island, and improving existing housing stock. Under natural, historic, and cultural resources, there was a lot of focus on resource protection, but also providing access to citizens and visitors, as well as celebrating the community resources that you have here. And Glen County is rich with them. So community facilities, services, and infrastructure, and this is really Glen County's facilities, services, and infrastructure, the need for water and sewer, infrastructure improvements, increasing public awareness of services and infrastructure and facilities that are out there, expansion of those services, and improvement of the facilities. Under residency, understanding and mitigating the impacts of sea level rise, floodplain management, and coastal emergency preparedness. Then, of course, clear governmental and interagency cooperation, of course, which is necessary to achieve much of what we've already talked about, but that included improved county-city relations, regional agency coordination, Platteck relationship, flexate relationship, and improved efficiency and access to resources. And lastly, touching on community health and supporting these community health functions. Under land use, one of the major approaches to looking at land use and identifying a future development strategy that the Department of Community Affairs asks local governments to consider and utilize are character areas. And they're not really, they convey an idea about future land use, but they are not a future land use map in and of themselves, because they really are meant to describe the general character of an area. And there might be several different land uses that are involved in that. For example, on St. Simon's Island, the village is a character area, but it has multiple different types of land uses in there. So we work with the groups to come up with a land use or a character area map. And within this, we use a description of photographs to identify that character. We looked at issues within that area, and we identified future development strategies as part of this. We did a cursory zoning analysis, which is not to say that we identified what zoning is appropriate in that area, more that we looked at what zoning you currently have in that area and made a, an assessment of whether or not the current zoning is appropriate based on the description of the character area and what those desired future development strategies are. Of course, future zoning ordinance development is the next step in this process. So here's the community character area map. And if you want to see a full-scale version, you can go on the website. Well, once the, the website will be, is up now, or will be up soon, you know? But that has some technical IT issues, but this can be found when the website is working on the website in a full version that you can scan for. It'll be easier to see. We also did create a future land use map, and this one was land use specific. And this is based on the character area map. And this is what we identified within that future land use, again, with the assistance of these steering committees, identifying those areas that are rural, those areas that are residential, the various densities that were desired in those areas, commercial, where you wanted regularly, you know, larger regional commercial versus neighborhood commercial, and areas for industrial and public institutional. And this is the future land use map. You can also see here where, similar to, there was the idea within your previous future land use map to identify a boundary between rural and urban, and that boundary being where infrastructure should provide, should be provided versus where it's in rural land use, and you might not extend infrastructure. It doesn't make sense, the financial sense, to extend infrastructure to those areas. We have a similar idea here in the separation between rural and urban city development on this map. We looked at transportation, and this is largely coordinated with your BACS group. You are an NPO, so you have the Brunswick Area Transit Study Group that needs. And so, working with that team, we looked at your existing transportation network, and in the end identified these opportunities that were translated into work plan action items. So the community work plan, or work program, I should say, this is the final element or the final chapter of your plan. And this is probably, if you're going to read any part of this plan, the most important part to read, because this is the list of action items that the county is going to take in order to achieve the vision and address those needs and opportunities. It includes over, I think, 80, or 79 or 80 action items. It identifies the responsible party. It estimates a cost and identifies a potential funding source, and it provides a priority status for it. The idea in terms of tracking implementation with this is that you would receive annual reports from the Community Development Department, and the Department of Community Affairs actually requires you to do a five-year update to track progress on this community work program. After that, you'll see a report of accomplishments, and that is also a requirement by the Department of Community Affairs to, and that's a look at your previous comp plans, five, short-term, at the time they called Short-Term Work Program. So that report of accomplishments looks at that previous list of items. Some of those have carried over. Some were not accomplished. Some have, in some cases, the priority at the county has shifted. So you can see a report in that as well. So the steering committees, like I said, were a big part of this process, and they did expend a lot of time on this plan. And they, at the last meeting that we had together, decided to identify their priorities. There is a long list, as you can see in that work program, there's a long list of items in that work program. And each committee had a list of priority issues and items that we thought it important to convey. And you can find that list in the plan under the community, under the community engagement section. But I was going to provide them here to you. So this is the Islands Steering Committee's priorities. And this includes adoption of a public participation plan, going forward to assist the county development office in the realization of this comprehensive plan, establishment of an overlay district for all of St. Simon's Island that would allow for implementation of some of the elements that are within this plan. Obviously, that would be part of our community zoning exercise. Establishment of a strategy for developing, promoting, and supporting alternative land use strategies. Adoption of a strategy to address the island traffic issues. Adoption of a strategy for water, sewer, and utilities to ensure capacity and prevent emergencies. A comprehensive tree inventory for the island, and an action plan for the protection and maintenance of the island tree can, and open space. Adoption of a short-term work program that is either within the capacity of current county staff or the necessary staff or consultants are hired to assist with implementation. And finally, sunsetting outdated ordinances and replacing them with enforceable ordinances that support the vision of the island into the future. So these were the priorities identified by the steering committee. That would be the Islands Steering Committee. The Mainland Steering Committee's priorities included focusing efforts on economic development that attracts clean industry, provides living wage jobs, and offers an attractive future to the youth of Glen County. Expanding efforts to provide scaled workforce training, both at the high school and post-secondary school level, that is consistent with the needs of desired industries here, including robotics specifically. Coordinating effectively with joint water and sewer authority to create a sound and affordable plan for water and sewer delivery that is consistent with the future land use plan and the ZLC's economic development. Plan to improve and beautify the community gateways at the four exits of I-95 to promote tourism and economic development. Work with Brunswick to support downtown revitalization. Improve connectivity throughout the community and provide opportunities for alternative modes of transportation. And lastly, to cooperate with the city on crime reduction initiatives. So those were the priorities identified by the citizens of both of those steering committees. So next steps in this process. This plan is currently out for public comment. There will be, today's presentation is up there. There will be a public hearing on Thursday, where the public can provide comment. The public can also provide written comment, either directly here at the county facility or through the website email address. And we have received a lot of public comment. After we receive this comment on June 21st, and we will make additional edits. So there will be getting another draft that incorporates public comment that's been received since the draft that you're currently looking at was created. This will be ready for you to review at the July 19th meeting, where you would adopt a resolution to transmit it to DCA for their review. You're not adopting at that point. You're merely adopting a resolution to transmit it to the Department of Community Affairs, and to go through their review process. At that point, they define their comments as a major and minor. And if they make a major comment, then you're required to address it. And if they don't, if it's only minor comments, then it's up to the county if you wish to address it. And once we get those comments and they are addressed to the, if we get comments, if we satisfy to the, or once those comments are addressed to the satisfaction of DCA, then you would be able to adopt the comp plan. So that adoption for the state department needs to happen before October 31st. And at that point, then we submit the final plan to DCA. So are there any questions or comments that I can make before you're on this panel?
Courtney, I applaud what you all have done. I've got a lot of people, a lot of moving parts, and I think it's been very methodical, and you've gone through it exactly the only way you can go through it methodically. I had a question in there somewhere. I read something about, we need to establish an economic identity. What does that mean?
I think that was a comment that we received as far as a need, and I think that was really about economic development and what is Glen County going to be known for. You know, and I know that there's a lot of comments or talk, the Mainland Committee looking at, you know, investing in or encouraging certain industries, maybe the robotics committee. I don't want to necessarily speak for the committee members who might have said that, but identifying what's going along within terms of promoting and marketing for economic development.
And my only other comment, when it got to the character areas, you know, you're reading along, I know this isn't written as a novel that we're going to sit around with every day, but you'd be reading along about something in western Glen County, the next paragraph we're on East Beach. And so it was sort of, you know, I understand that you had it alphabetically to start with, and that was probably a little confusing.
Yeah, we, you know, it's been a struggle in this plan to not be separatist, to treat the county as a whole, the unincorporated county, I should say, as a whole, and not focus on St. Simon's here and the mainland here. Although, a lot of, in reality, that's the way the county functions. And we can go in and we can separate those. Some of the character areas actually appear in both places. So we would maybe have to do mainland, islands, and then joint, instead of clear in both places. But we can certainly, you have to reorder it. Certainly, I don't want to make it harder to read.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just having a hard time keeping up with where I was. So, anything, Commissioners, you all got anything to add? Have you left things to follow?
I guess my question would be around the discussion among the committee folk. Was it, frankly, was it a lot of bickering, or if it was more folk coming together to, around these common themes?
I think you have to kind of shoehole it in to make it presentable though. Wow. Thanks for throwing me a softball question there. The, it wasn't really, in the end, coming together. It wasn't, I'm not suggesting that it was easy, and/or that there wasn't, at times, heated conversations or bickering. But I think in the end, it was, there was a lot of consensus within both of the committees. In fact, we had two, our last two meetings were joined. So you had the mainland and the St. Simon's Island, or Islands Committee, meeting together. And there was, I think, everybody's surprise, more to agree on than to disagree on. So I do think that there is a lot, sometimes the perception that there's differences is larger than the reality of any differences there are.
And that's what I wanted to get at, that folk here on the island, mainland, did find a way to come together around common themes for the betterment of the community.
Absolutely. And any, any of the steering committee members and a lot of the citizens who provided comment, if you're willing to spend that much time engaging, it's because you care about where you live. And so eventually, you can always find common ground without making where you live better.
And tend to develop a respect for each other as you keep, as you keep meeting.
Any other comments, questions? Courtney, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next chapter. All right. Item number two, presentation regarding the Veterans Memorial Concept.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, sir. Peterson told. He'll indulge me for a moment.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and everyone here today, I would like to take a few words before we get so with the orientation here. I say orientation. This is the first good opportunity for me to introduce most of the people that have sat in for quite some time trying to develop the plan that we have here today. You know, I'd like to recognize those now that are here. Sandra, Kendall Kaps, she's sitting out here. Colonel Nick Hart, he's here today. Philip Viviani, Sandra Turgidy, the mayor, he's part of the committee. Woody Woodside's part of the committee. Fellow Commissioner Bob Coleman, he's part. Don't know if I've left anybody out. You have, but if you're here, rise up and let me know. Sure about to recognize you. The work's not done. I think it's mostly done, but what we're about to see here today, I believe, goes to the heart of what the Commissioners, working with the city, if we go back a couple of years ago in time... ago in time, when the city had a vision for that block, the county decided on to it. We had a concept, and what we see here today is going to be the fruition of trying to develop that concept. And what we wanted it to do, hopefully what you'll see here today, is we wanted a park that the community could be proud of and go out and just enjoy as a park, but we wanted, that park is going to be our tribute to all those that have ever served this country, whether you're from here or not. And it's our Veterans Memorial Park, and so it's a twofold thing. We honor our veterans, and we also provide a beautiful park in downtown project, a beautiful place that we have here. And with that, hopefully, we'll see if that's what we, where we are today. And with that, I want to present to Peyton Peterson, who's a PSW, the head folks that have helped us come up with what we consider today. Peyton?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming out and joining us today. Who here is not really familiar with where this park exactly is located? It's just two blocks north of where we're currently sitting, between I and J Street blocks. So that's where some contextual context for you. This right here is the overall sort of master plan, a little sort of master plan that we've been working on the past couple of months and have come to fruition. To give you sort of an idea, I Street is over here, and J Street is here, Newcastle is here, and Reynolds Street is here. So north is this direction. Where we currently are is sort of off the page over in this area to the south. So, big idea, we wanted to provide parking and this sort of central access to what is a focal point of the Veterans Monument. This parking lot here is accessible from I Street, and it is about 23 total parking spaces. And when you get out of your car here, there's sort of a gateway feature right around here where the, where the D marker is, that takes you over this bridge and bioswale area, which is where we're handling most of our stormwater for the site. And you come across this sort of bridge and into this bosque of palm trees and upper sort of plaza, is what we're calling it, that overlooks this open lawn area in the, this Veterans Monument, which is about on the same horizontal field as the upper area. This lawn area here has a natural slope, so it's kind of serving as a natural in the air. But it's about three feet higher on this end than it is on this end, and not quite that tall, maybe about two feet. So it has a gentle slope. It does shed water to the bottom here, where we'll have a drainage system, like we underground collect the water. The stage is a couple of steps up, so it feels elevated and prominent, given the signal, signaling its importance, overall presence in the area. The diameter of this Veterans Monument is 76 feet wide, and it's about 33 feet from the middle marker to the first riser step. So this front area we're linking would be, it's about 33 by 76, plenty of space to set up potential speakers, or if you have small little concerts or events happening out here in the park, they have plenty of room to set up. And then sort of behind here is these markers. There are six markers, and then there's a central sort of larger monument, to give a seventh, that represent the various wars and the branches of military. So we have, and I'll get into that in a little more detail in a second, but you have the six branches of military, and then you'll have a larger marker that is dedicated to specific veterans of the Brunswick area. Sort of on the backside here is just additional on-street parking along J Street. J Street's already sort of paved, so we're just talking about minor improvements in terms of widening it a little bit in order to get some front and iGree parking off of J Street. So this is potentially some of the materiality that we're linking in the park. You have your granite. These are sort of bench standards, like, and trap receptacle standards that we're looking, which match elsewhere around Glen County particularly. So you have Brunswick. This upper plaza area, again, here, we're linking would be more of like a boardwalk material, break up some of the concrete, and to create just a different feel rather than just your typical concrete sidewalk. And then the, both this area here and a portion of this upper plaza, we're thinking potentially be these bricks, which we could do engraved bricks, where people can purchase a brick and have their families or names or whatnot engraved on the bricks. This is some of the plant material that we're linking for the park. We haven't gotten into an actual planning plan yet, but we've been generating sort of a plant palette, and we're looking at trying to keep it as native as possible, but we have some of the sort of coastal doom grasses, muli grass, sable liners, palms, your Indian hawthorn, bottle brush plants, and magnolias. So this is an aerial looking, this is, I Street is over here, J Street is at the top of the page, looking down the sort of central corridor axis. This is the large parking lot in this, that bioswale area that I was referring to earlier, that is, we're bringing up most of the stormwater mitigation. So the way that we currently have designed the grading on the site is that this parking lot is tilted, so everything will drain into this bioswale. And this is sort of the upper bosque area where we have the palm to come through the boardwalk, provides some shade. This is looking as if you're crossing over the bridge, coming from the parking lot in your first entrance into the park. You're crossing into the bioswale, you can see the palms, architecturally provide a nice frame for the Veterans Monument in the distance. You can see we're doing some sort of play elements with these berms, burning up the landscape on the edges to create sort of a wave effect, symbolic of the tides here, but also to help shield the on-street parking that is on J Street behind the Veterans Monument. This is another view of the upper sort of bosque plaza area, the wood deck of trees coming up through. We're thinking that you potentially, but we could have a couple of chairs, tables and chairs out in there, fixed tables and chairs, and you could sit and relax in the shade. This is looking across the large lawn area, so you can see sort of roughly how the stage is elevated, and is really the focal point of the park itself. And this is the actual Veterans Monument. So here, we have three risers. This is that large open front area that I was just talking about for setting up of speakers, vents, you have a couple of chairs, like, you know, podium. And then we have a central United States of American flag, the state flag, and a prisoner of war flag that will be there 24/7, but we're providing temporary sort of flagpole holders in the ground that are going to be behind each marker that are the military branch of flags. And speaking to this sort of radial pattern, each, this is sort of, it's flush with the ground, but it's an inscribed sort of marker, and on this marker, it sort of radiates out to that branch of military. This is another view down I level in the plaza, what it would look like. And this is the back entrance to the Veterans Monument from J Street. So if you park on J Street, this would be your primary entrance. We widened this since the last time to provide access around this large central marker. This marker here would be the only marker that is two-sided. The other ones would just face inwards. And I'll get into that in more detail in a second. So with the individual markers, we have from left to right, if you're looking at the monument head-on, because Army, Marine Corps, Navy, then you have the larger central marker, and then to the right back, you have Air Force, Coast Guard, and then the merchant marines. The front of the memorial is the larger one, is the one that would be where we inscribe the various wars, conflicts, and then those names that served in the conflict. With each sort of division of military, we'll have a insignia, and then this is sort of the various text sizes that will be on, this is larger than what it will be in your life, but we're doing an inch and a half and 0.75 inches for the names, which is, looking at precedent studies, that's the same as what is on the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, For the actual granite materiality, these we're looking at as being a black granite. It, the engraving pops a little bit more on the black polished granite. And then the central one will be a monolithic gray granite with a black granite handle One more thing about the central monument, so this is the front of the larger central monument with the names, and then the back, coming from J Street, we were thinking of doing an engraved sort of picture. This is the picture that we have proposed at this time, where you have these kind of sort of following them into the Veterans Monument. To give you a sense of scale for the individual military branch monuments, they're six feet tall and four feet wide. This one here sort of represents an average person's height. That's the other side. And then for this central marker, it's 10 feet tall and six feet wide. It's a little, little larger. And that's essentially it. I'll go back to the main sort of plan graphic. If there are any questions, anyone?
I got two questions. One, you said there was a downgrade from, as we look at this from right to left, and that there was drainage, I guess, on the outside of the circle. What, is that hooked into the regular stormwater drain, or is that going to flow back into the hole in pond back there?
So the, so this sidewalk here is kind of like a ridge line, so everything to the right of that sidewalk, we're draining the bioswale here, so the parking lot all drains this way in the bioswale. The sidewalk's a ridge line, so if a water drop like it's here, it's going to drain this way into an underdrain system that will then connect into the stormwater, it won't go back to the bioswale. So this is, this is strictly a detention on, it's not going to be pouring any water for any period of time.
That's just to catch a heavy rain or something like?
Correct. First flood application.
All right. Second question, will there be lighting on this at night?
There will be. There will be lighting in, we're going to be using George Power Poles to set the general pedestrian poles throughout the park, and then there will also be some ambient accent lighting. There'll be lighting on the flags, applying probably on the monuments themselves, maybe some lighting around the upper bosque area as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you, Carter?
Sir, I'm sorry, it's, this is a work session. It is not open for public. I'm sorry.
He asked if I had any questions.
He was asking us, I think, the commissioners.
No, he asked me.
Is it, it's the commissioners' meeting, so?
I'll allow, if he asks you the question.
I'll keep it to a very minimum, in place. My one question, and I've already talked it over with Mr. Peterson. We're honoring our veterans, and this is great. Also spoken of war dead. I have here a list of 41 men who died in the service of the Confederate States of America who come from Glen County. Are we going to, as a county, turn our back on these 41 men and not honor them? And that's all my question is. I'll keep, I have this list.
Sir, I can't answer that question, but we'll, we'll address it, I'm sure, and...
Can I give, can I present you this?
Sure, absolutely. Just give it to the county clerk. Thank you very much. All right, any other questions from the board?
Would it be premature to talk about where we stand with the financing, the costs of the money that's been appropriated by SPOSS for this project?
Sure. Well, go ahead, Sean. I'll listen to me. I do have a general cost statement, if you want to talk about here or later. So SPOSS funds, including the design piece for the project, everything was 1.5 million. Currently, we're budgeted at around 1.7 million. But talking with Commissioner Browning in previous meetings, we think that the numbers that we're using have a 20% contingency, and some of the numbers that we've been using may be more Atlanta-based prices, so there's a little bit of fluff in some of those numbers. And there's also ample opportunity when the bids come back, as doing add alternates and potentially doing some VE options, like the wood deck up here could easily turn to concrete or whatnot for cost savings.
And what's your timeline here?
So after approval of the concept plan from the board commissioners, we're going to go back and start working with our stormwater team in more detail and silo engineers. We need probably about a month and a half, two months, to present the, what we're going to call 90% construction documents. We've got 50% construction documents. Previously, we'll present 90% state construction documents for one last round of comments from everybody, and then we'll issue the 100% for bid construction documents. It will be probably another three or four weeks after initial six to eight weeks. So we're looking at about 10, 10 weeks.
With the, where we are right now, there's some details still that we all need to talk about, and it just needs to be made clear that we're not setting all this in stone at the moment. I think we largely have what we've all talked about, what we want it to look like, but I do know the committee's got, you know, we're talking about trees that are out there, what we're going to do with those trees, that has not been settled. I want that to be clear. Even the vegetation that's going to be throughout the park, we hadn't settled on that, but with the, we're going to have to get serious, folks, and make some decisions here pretty soon, because this next step, we do need to start nailing everything down, and we kind of know what we want to nail down. And of course, the money's the driver. The 1.7 number has got to come down to 1.5. We all know that, we want the community to know that, and we can do it for the 1.5. So this today is to let the commissioners get on board with what we know we have at this point in the game, and unless there's any major heartburn from the commissioners, we want to move forward with this. We want them to sign off and just say, hey, you like what you got? Let's get this thing cleaned up and ready for a final. So that's where we are. Dave, you got anything you want to add to it? I didn't mention Dave, but Dave's been in all the meetings, he's our Public Works Director, and Dave is really the one that's going to have to make this thing happen at the end of the day, working with, you know, these consultants and working with the contractors and all. So if you had anything you want to add, you know, that's the time to really, so.
Have you, you know, it sounds like you're concerned about the shortfall of cash, and I think it is a fabulous design, and I like your construction materials, the stone, et cetera. Have you considered what you might do if you just couldn't get it down from 1.7 to 1.5 and without compromising? and without compromising on the quality, or, or, or what you're really looking to achieve here, such as maybe private fundraising? You know, I, I would think that in this community, you may be able to draw on the veterans to make up the shortfall. I mean, I would just consider that rather than compromise quality, because I just, you know, I'd rather you not build it if you use cheap materials or bad stone or smaller monuments, that would be my suggestion.
Sure. One of the things that was talked about previously are the engraved bricks, could that be a possibility?
Right. I'm just talking about a general fundraiser.
Yeah, that, that's an option, but let me say too, to stay within the 1.5, you know, we, we, we have an idea what all the parts and pieces cost.
To get it at 1.7?
That, that, that we're at now. And some of those parts and pieces may not be as important. We may want all of them, but may not be as important as ever there on day one. We may can leave those out, and we can bid this thing with options for the parts and pieces, okay? We can bid it with the options, and then when the bids come back, if it's 1.5 instead of 1.7, we can do all of it. If the bids come back and we're over that 1.5, we can look at those things that maybe if they weren't in there too, a lot of people may not notice right now, but things we'd like to have, and we can come back at a later time, we have the money, it may be a fundraiser like you're talking about, get the money, but we could do it that way.
Mike, I sense there would be people that would want to be a part of it.
Right.
They would want to, you know, would want to contribute to it, and I just think that probably, believe that as an option and...
No, just, just don't, don't compromise, you know, we could find the money.
Yeah, I, I agree with it, and also I think we should look at it almost as, this is phase one. Phase one is going to be the largest phase we'll ever see, but it's phase one, it's not everything we're ever going to want in that park.
Right.
It's not. But again, the one thing we know we got to work with is that 1.5 million.
Right.
And so, we'll do everything we can with it, and the way we can go about bidding it out, we'll have options to do it all if it comes in, you know, within that 1.5, if we have to leave a few things off and do them later, we can do that, so. And, and those things that we do, it will be quality.
Yep, good.
What, Commissioner Browning, so what, what would stop us from just doing the bricks at least for the, and I think he pointed out an area where they could go, why couldn't we just go ahead and open that up to folk, I mean, even if it's just, you know, a few people, at least, to give them an opportunity, especially the people who have served, to have the name on it?
Yeah, we can do that, but to move the project forward in a timely fashion, once we get to that point where it's, you know, bid it out, you know, we would need to, we need to have some funding in place up front, which Spas is.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, I mean, you keep going like you're going, but just go ahead and, I mean, you could, we got that newspaper here, just, say we got some bricks for sale. And, and, you know, just, just open it up.
Okay.
We will.
Okay.
Well, I certainly applaud your efforts.
There's a delicate way to do this, isn't there? Excuse me, sorry, I'm late.
Thank you, and thank all of you who participated in to this point, and certainly we look forward to, we're just, going forward, it's going to be a real tribute, not only to our veterans, but to our community at large.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just ask, how would the board like for us to proceed from this point forward? Does the committee need to meet again, or is it the conception, consensus of the board to move forward with, with final design and construction documents?
It looks great to me. I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to move on.
Yeah, with the, with the qualification that we, you know, we got to nail down the community, but I think we're ready to do it. Do you have to take a vote or anything like that?
I don't think so, we're just moving forward, just direction to move forward.
Great, perfect.
Okay. I think the voters already did that. Okay, item number three, presentation regarding the village drainage improvement project. Dr. Murphy described this relative to a six-hour complicated heart surgery as being a piece of cake, so I assume that he's not going to make this presentation.
No, but it's, it's just like heart surgery, only these tubes are a little bigger.
I heard you've been crawling down those.
Cost about the same.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dan Pierce, and I'm the manager of the Public Works, and I'm the project manager for the village drainage improvement projects, and we currently hired Gordon Warrior Biome Services, who are here by my workroom, and you've got some hands on the water that was handling around. Just to give you a little background about the project, this is Spas 2016 Drainage Improvement Project. The budget that we have for the project is rather than $600,000. Currently, we're closing in on one final land development. We had a project meeting just a couple of weeks ago, and we're very closely at the details of the plans, drainage improvements, asphalt improvements, the sidewalk improvement, a lot of the details and all of that, but this, this is primarily just to, here to advise on what the project scope is and what the project status is. So with that on my part, I would... Good afternoon, commissioners, good afternoon, Glen County staff, Glen County residents. It is a privilege to be here today, and we try to explain the project and give you an update on where we are from the scope of the work, what we found during our analysis, as well as the proposed improvements moving forward. A brief project description is, we were tasked with evaluating the watershed in the village area, and also to come up with reasonable solutions for storm drainage improvements in the community. What I would like to do is pull up a map and talk a little bit about what is going on in our analysis that we were able to find. Roughly, there's about 105 acres of land that is currently draining to a single outfall at Virginia Street. And the majority of the stormwater is coming from Mallory Street, Lord Avenue, Beachview, and it is being released into the Grove Retention Pond, which is ultimately being released to Virginia Street Outfall. If I could summarize our assessment, we basically came to the conclusion that there were enough improvements that needed to be made in the community that it needed to be broken out into two phases, of phase one and phase two. Phase one, if I can summarize that, is for conveyance improvements in the community. And phase two would be capacity improvements within the community as far as stormwater. What you'll see on the overall project map in blue is what is currently drained to the Virginia Street Outfall as of now, project in phase one. That is just the flow characteristics of the watershed that would flow that direction. Phase two, which is in yellow, would flow potentially to a, a new outfall, or continue along to the Virginia Street Outfall. We'll get a little more into detail on the phases and the work that's involved. Phase one improvements map, I'd like to point out what the improvements will entail. Phase one is going to eliminate restrictions and bottlenecks in the stormwater system that are currently there now. For example, we have some storm drainage pipes that are 18 inches that convey flow into pipes that are 12 inches, that can fade back into pipes that are 18 inches and larger. And those smaller pipes are restricting flow. Also, we're going to increase the inlet collection points along Mallory Street that will be able to allow stormwater to get into the system and to be conveyed away as quickly As we can see on Mallory Street, these are the areas that will be impacted most indefinitely. What we are concluding is we will be installing curb and gutter system. I think that was one of the major improvements that we saw is the, roads have been overlaid so much with asphalt in the past that the gutter system that was there is no longer there, and so we have a curb height that's two to three inches, and that's not very beneficial when you're trying to convey a lot of stormwater to the nearest inlet. So therefore, we're going to remove what is there and come back with a new curb and gutter system. We're also going to remove the bottlenecks that we've found, we're going to make sure that the proper sized pipes are put in place. Currently, everything from Butler Avenue, roughly Butler Avenue, flowing toward Lord Avenue is conveyed to the Grove Retention Pond. There is a smaller system on Butler that collects flow and comes into a smaller retention pond right behind the storefronts. What we'll be doing is enlarging the system on Butler to handle more capacity, as well as we are going to interconnect both systems. Currently, they are not connected. So what does interconnection mean? Interconnection will mean that if stormwater gets restricted or blocked, or the system capacity is reached, we'll have the ability to flow into another direction and go out through an inlet that's able to release the proper amount of flow. We're also going to do some improvements through the retention pond that will be for more operational and maintenance type, type issues. We included some pictures of the existing conditions and some of the critical points that were evaluated as part of our analysis. As you can see, a lot of these areas, we tried to catch during rainfall or right after rainfall events, so we can pinpoint some of those areas of concern. One of our areas of concern is at the intersection of Oglethorpe Avenue and Mallory Street. Currently, the Oglethorpe is a dirt road, we're going to come back for a section, a small section of the road in anticipation of future improvements, and put some asphalt and some new drainage inlets. As you can see right here, this buildup of water that's at the intersection, we're actually going to have an inlet there which will allow that flow to be conveyed out of, out of the, out of the street. Some of the other areas that you can see, this is behind the commercial buildings near Butler Avenue, we have our smaller retention pond here, this is the area that we're going to be enlarging some pipes and enhancing flow capabilities. We also have other points where we have inlets in the roadways that are receiving some erosion and things of that nature, we're going to try to make sure that those issues are addressed. At the Grove Retention Pond, we're going to, this is a wooden overflow rear structure here, we're going to come back and make sure that that is a permanent installation with a concrete overflow to help maintenance. One of the challenges that we have worked hand in hand with Mr. Austin, Mr. Pierce, and their staff is what are the impacts to the community based on these improvements that we are making? We understand that these are not only sensitive areas for businesses, but also for tourism and for private residents, so what impacts can we expect? There will may be some temporary road closures, there may be some temporary parking space, handicap ramp closures, there may be some temporary sidewalk closures in front of businesses. We have challenged ourselves to be able to provide the highest level of design, and we have worked on our design hand in hand with Glen County staff to ensure that the business owners and the residents are impacted as less as possible. So, different things will occur, but one of the things that we require the contractor before he is able to begin work is submitting a construction schedule and plan. We want to make sure that that plan is approved before he begins, and make sure that he is not going to go through and regather it throughout the entire community, it will be an established plan to get things back in order, to make sure businesses have access for their customers and residents to access their homes. When we look at a project schedule, what can we expect? We recently had a meeting with Glen County staff to review 90% construction documents, we were making improvements to those documents and getting them ready for bid. The next step will be to have a meeting with village merchants and discuss the project more in depth, answer their questions, and make sure that they have all the understand, understanding that they need in anticipation of when and what may occur. Potentially bid, bidding can begin in August, with a bid opening in September, an approval by the commission if they decide to move forward in September, a contract execution in October, and a notice to proceed after Georgia, Florida. This, we want to make sure that the tourism industry is impacted as least as possible, and after Georgia, Florida is the date that we have been given and advised that we should shoot for. In anticipation of a notice to proceed after Georgia, Florida, begin construction in November, we anticipate potentially 150 days, five months, that will put our construction ending in March of 2019. Now, a couple of things on a construction schedule that may be impacted, if we get good weather, we believe the contractor can exceed those expectations. Over the unknowns and things with winter that will be during that time that they will have to confront, we want to make sure that we give them ample time so that their prices are not overramped in estimation of delays with construction. A brief description of phase two, we have just completed our survey, this was based on analysis of improving the capacity of the existing system. At this time, we'll be reviewing options for a potential new outfall, or there will be some challenges associated with permitting with the DNR, so we will confront those as more information becomes available and more coordination with Glen County staff on preference. The general concept is to take the load off of the existing system and provide a new outlet that will increase the capacity and get water out to the sound faster, cause less issues with, within the community. As far as our project budget to date, our initial budget for the project, as Mr. Pierce referred to, was $600,000, that did include engineering. The total engineering cost was a little less than $60,000, we have roughly $6,000 remaining in that project. The total budget remaining for construction is $546,000. As far as phase one improvements, we have done a cost estimate based on 90% construction zones, that estimate has come in at $587,000. However, we feel that this is conservative, we feel that competitive pricing will come on budget. There are no guarantees with that, as the economy improves, prices are escalating, material prices are escalating, so there, there is some unknown there, but we feel as close as we are that we can get a contractor that will provide a competitive bid that fall within the budget that is there for phase one. Phase two engineering budget has been approved, it is a little more than $50,000, however, this is a project that was not anticipated in Spas funding, and so therefore, any potential movement, movement forward with construction, that will have to be identified for additional funding at that time. The main point that we want to stress here is in phase two is more improvements, phase one is not, not the end, there will be more to come. That's all that I have. That's all that I have to present at this time. Are there any more questions?
Go ahead.
I have probably two. One, with the construction schedule, it looks like you're starting around the holiday season?
Yes, sir.
You don't feel like that would be disruptive for the village area and any of the merchants?
Yes, sir. There will be some disruption during the holidays. That is something that cannot be avoided. But I would like to say that after Georgia, Florida, that was anticipated by Glen County staff as being a good time to get this project moving forward, and also that the contractor will have to submit a construction plan with a schedule that will be approved prior to beginning construction. While we cannot define means and methods, we can definitely have input on how and when they're going to do the work. That may impact some of the holiday season, but their contractors are going to take the holidays for their families as well, and so hopefully we'll have a jointed effort. Also, construction will not commence on weekends. It is not anticipated. It will be Monday through Friday unless there are requests by the contractor through the general conditions of the contract that are approved by Glen County. So therefore, work should stop at 5:00 PM on Friday and pick up at 8:00 AM on Monday.
So would it stopping? I mean, if it's not completed, there still will be equipment around and other things.
Yes, sir. What we would probably require is that they have a lay down area that they are working with the county on, and to be an approved place to supply, to put their materials as well as their equipment. They will be responsible for safety and security of that, to make sure that there is not a pedestrian safety hazard, and making sure that those things are taken care of. That will be something that we will address as part of their construction plan.
Right. I guess that would be a concern of mine, the safety, especially during the holiday season with people out.
So on the construction timeline, we're front loading that to get it on the schedule as soon as possible. However, we're going to get with the village merchants, we're going to look and get through the holiday season before we start tearing up people's sidewalks in front of their businesses. But there's other parts to the project that we can probably get started on in November. And so, that's why we want to get the contract out there. We want to be able to dictate when some of these things are going to happen. We want to get together with the village merchants and decide when, you know, get through the holiday season as far as in their...right in the front area, right there on Mallory Street. It's going to be some coordination, but there is going to be some pain, as you can expect, especially for the Island Commissioner.
What was the name of the dirt road? We're going to do just a short amount of paving and an inlet. Was that Oglethorpe? Was it Lord or?
Oglethorpe.
Oglethorpe. Dave, is Oglethorpe on the Spalost dirt road pavement?
No, sir. Sir, they...those folks down there don't want that road paved, is what I've been told.
I'm good with that.
So we're just paving a short little area of it where we have a drainage concern.
I mean...
But there's two or three dirt roads or mill roads down in the village.
I remember. They don't want paved. Yeah. Okay. I was just kind of hoping, well, they didn't want to pave, it was on the list, because we could do that with the Spalost.
What you were talking about a while ago on the curbing and guttering of Mallory in the center there, is that...you said that there'd been a lot of buildup over and over and over, consequently, the road is all but level with the sidewalk? Is that pretty much what...how would that be? I mean, would we build a sidewalk up and put like a high curb or what?
That is a great question. So as part of our design, what we're going to do is go back to the parking...basically, the parking lane is roughly about 20 feet from the edge of the sidewalk. What we're going to do at that point is we're going to mill it down and be able to re-slope from that point down to a new curb line. So the sidewalk will not increase in height. We're also going to take in front of the Juana's, it has a curb only, but it's about four to six inches off of the ground right there. It's a tripping hazard. It's a safety hazard. We're going to remove that, and we're going to come back with a new curb line in that area. And so pedestrians will be able to step off of the sidewalk down onto the pavement instead of over a curb.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because I was...when you started to talk about building something up, that was going to give a bunch of people something to step over.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Burke, that was a great, great presentation on a complicated subject that will be incredibly disruptive. So David, help me. Aren't we also going to be repaving some roads at the same time?
On Mallory Street?
No. On the island.
Yes, on the island. Yes, we're going to be repaving some roads open at the same time.
What roads would those be?
So we're targeting Demery, Federica, and improvements...well, I need to speak to Ross, but...
Yeah, yeah. Will we be careful to avoid the construction equipment on your newly repaved roads?
Get it all over with.
Good.
He did say Demery and Federica.
Repave and then roll a lot of this heavy equipment over those roads.
We won't do that.
Okay. And the other point I...
I still want to stab him with my pen.
You know, Commissioner Booker, it's going to be terribly disruptive, but it's a five month project, and if we start it after the holidays, then you get into Easter holiday, spring break, and the beginning of summer. I don't know when you can do a 150 day project and not upset something, but I appreciate your comment about the holidays.
If you can take it, I can.
Believe me, this is nothing.
What a guy.
This will be like a pillow fight. But I think the key's going to be getting the merchants together. That has been a bit of a challenge. You know, on some of these other issues, David and others have made, you know, a real great effort to get the merchants together, and we really have to have optimal communication here, Dave. So that's on you. I will be there. I will be there, but you grab them, get them together to educate them on this. And the last thing that's important, though, as disruptive this is going to be, we're not going to be repaving all of Mallory. We're just going to have some little...what would you call them? Little patching, I guess, on Mallory. But it's going to be high quality patching because the road's not that old. But the one thing that is a little bit concerning is the sidewalks are not all owned by the county, correct, David?
Correct.
So some of those old sidewalks with the sort of historic imprints of bubble gum from 50 years ago, they look kind of nasty. They will still be there, unfortunately. It would be nice if we could replace all the sidewalks and really give it an upgrade, but that's not part of the project, correct?
At this time, we're looking at replacing the sidewalk from Butler Avenue all the way through Lord in front of the Juana's to Kingsway.
So we'll do some of the sidewalks, but not all. Yeah. Thank you, Burke. That was great.
Well, gentlemen, there's no doubt that this drainage needs to be done.
Right.
This has been an issue down there for a long time. Is there any paving scheduled for Lord Avenue at all? Is it getting repaved under this project?
I don't think so under this project, no.
Because when Commissioner Browning put up dirt roads, that's the other one. So I didn't...it's, you know, I didn't know if we were looking at that or not. But anyway, maybe we can find some money on to do that.
Do they want it paved?
Lord Avenue? Yeah, I don't think I'm going to complain about that. It's like mill train going down through there. But one of the things we might need to do, though, is make sure, kind of like the city did when they had the movie thing going on, hey, we're open for business down here for the merchants, because once we start tearing things up, people are going to start shying away from the village area, thinking it's really going to be, you know, torn up. And it may behoove us to get some pictures of progress and what's going on, and get this on the web and those type of things. So people will say, oh, no, you can still get down there, you can still get around, you can still park, you can still get to the businesses. So this is a suggestion.
That's going to be the big challenge, is the parking.
Yeah. It's going to be a challenge, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
We have to put detour signs up, just kind of inching Gloucester and Newcastle Streets.
We'll take that.
Eight mile detour here. Mayor just volunteered to print up the signs.
Might be an opportunity to work with the city on this.
All right. I think the staff needs green light.
Absolutely.
Go.
Thank you.
Listen, I know that there must be a font that is smaller than this power point situation here, but it would disappear if there were.
Why you think I turned around?
I was going to take this home with me, but I don't know what I'd do with it when I got there.
Yeah, but we're saving money, Commissioner. Doesn't matter if we all go blind trying to read this, saving pages.
How much ink we save?
Okay. Thank you very much. Discussion of policy regarding events taking place on the beach. Lisa?
It'd be you. And Rhodes. Also to give a preamble, because I've asked Lisa to take the lead on this. But the background of this is...was a request that we have a fun run on the beach, and I have heard through the year that there have been multiple requests of various organizations to utilize the beach for a variety of purposes, one of which was some form of wrestling match down on the beach. But so my initial reaction was to say, you know, let's go slow here. We don't want the beach to be overwhelmed by these events. But as it turns out, the one that really caught my attention was one from Magnolia Manor. Magnolia Manor wanted to have a run this June, meaning earlier, and it didn't happen because of this issue. I wanted to present it to you all. And it turns out, through being educated by them, Magnolia Manor's a 501(c)(3) affiliated with the Methodist Church that does a lot of charitable work for people in need of long-term care. And the fun run was to help fund, I believe it was generators, during storms, to make sure that when the power goes out, they can still care for their folks, because they had to close down a lot of these places during our hurricanes. So that was a question I was asking Lisa to look into, because she's the expert, is what do you think about having some charity events on the beach, early, not interfere with beach traffic, you know, beach people, you know, 7:30 in the morning type thing? But then part and parcel with this was a request from Sea Island to have a half marathon. And they did that last year, but it was all on Sea Island. It was just a run up and down the road on Sea Island. This year, and there's some folks here from Sea Island, Lisa may address this, but I think we ought to at least discuss that also. The idea is to start on Sea Island, maybe go up and down Sea Island a little bit, then come down Federica Road towards the roundabout and head along the airport over to the lodge. So there's a couple of things that people want to do in our community that I think would be, you know, redound to the benefit of the people in the community, particularly those that like to run and the track clubs and whatnot. So Lisa, take it away.
Thank you. I apologize, I don't have these slides. I was working on some stuff, and then Ted, we're good with volunteers, I'm going to interview them a little bit, so I apologize. But yes, sir, we...I've been here since September, and in that time, we've had numerous requests from different groups or individuals wanting to have different activities on the beach. And some of them have been as simple as weddings, which is usually not a problem. Some of them have been a little more involved, such as the beach wrestling, paddleboard and some 5K run. And so, looking at the county ordinances and looking at some of the historical things that have been done, there's just not...there's not really been any established kind of guidelines for what can be done or what can't be done. And not to say that anything can be done with the approval of the board commissioners, but it would be good to have some guidelines in place so that staff can vet these things as they come up without having to bring every single issue to you, we would have, we would already know. The county does have a public conduct permit application process, and that's kind of what we've been pointing to in the nine months that I've been here, is for these groups that come and ask for things, if they have over 100 people at their event, then a minimum they've got to go through the public conduct permit application process. And that's obviously vetted by the police chief and assistant chief trout. And through that process, they answer a variety of questions, but the question that it doesn't seem to answer is what can be held on the beach? It's more so what's on the streets, what's in the parks, what's...you know, what's it? The casino, what's the Neptune, what's the Postel, what's a guest one block? And so, looking for some guidance for you guys on how, you know, move forward to develop something that would be more of a process, a permit process for beach events. Obviously, the one thing that we need to consider and make clear is the minimal impact to the residents and to the community, you know, where do we want to have these events? Are we talking about allowing opportunities for people to have things at the Coast Guard Park, Beach Area, Masago Park only, or the whole expanse of the beach? There's just a lot of questions and a lot of things that need to be looked at. An event that's...for something that's, you know, right now, the main ordinance that we have with regards to beach use is no commercial activity. Well, an event that may be...a charitable organization may be having an event, but there's fees that go along with that. Some of those fees being charged on the beach, or is it pre-sale for participants ahead of time? Are they registering a lot ahead of time? The events that we have out there, I feel like they need to be consistent with the strategic planning initiatives that the board has adopted, which is, you know, say, community, physically responsible, make it a great place to live, good customer service, you know, value employees. Is the event going to impact the county's resources? Are we going to need police, fire, EMTs, lifeguards? What are we going to need out there? And if we have an event that's out there on the beach or even on the roadways, you know, what's the cost to the county to be able to provide those services? And where is that cost coming from? Because it's not built into the budget, most likely, we have to come from the event, establishing some fees for those kinds of things that will be kind of consistent among different groups. Your point about the timing of things is critical. There are certain times of the year, obviously, when you would not want to entertain shutting down roads for a 5K or shutting down a beach access. You can shut down the beach access, but involving the beach access that would potentially have some negative impact on the surrounding community and the parking, you definitely have to plan, you know, is it early Saturday morning or Sunday morning outside of the scope of our regular peak time, which I would tend to think would be more like May through September as kind of your peak time, and then maybe your non-peak time, you could allow more. I mean, the county can...basically, it's a blank canvas right now as to what the county can do, can't do, as far as making decisions on, do we say that, you know, events will only be entertained during these months or these hours of operation at these locations? How much impact do we want to have on the beach? If we allow somebody to have an event on the beach, is it, you know, private, there's a private event for a wedding or something versus a public event like a run or something like that? So it's really just a wide canvas that we can kind of paint based on what you would like to see happen up there, what you feel like the residents will appreciate and not get bothered by, because you can't obviously inundate the residents every weekend with some event going on at the park and have the parking so used by that event that it's going to affect parking into over, into neighborhoods. You know, I have been in touch with Kent and her team at Sea Island Foundation to look at some options for that half marathon. That's obviously a much larger decision than just me, because obviously, our police chief and those folks need to look at the plans that they proposed, and that's a pretty involved thing. They've done a lot of work with Kent and her team, I think, with the race organizers, to look at different options that might minimize the impact to roadways and such, but there would be impact in, you know, utilizing, utilizing volunteers versus public safety personnel. You know, that would be a public safety decision on whether they felt comfortable with that kind of a...that kind of decision. So let me look at some of my notes here. You know, there's just a variety...there's so many things to think about when you think about an event on the beach. Obviously, like I said, no commercial activities. You know, things have to be evaluated if it's in the best interest of the county, and sometimes the best interest of the county is what do the residents want? Sometimes it may be what's good for the businesses too. So if you do have an event that comes in that brings in hotel rights and people spending money at your restaurants and in your stores, there's some value to that possibly as well. Again, the charitable aspect of it, of the local group that's supporting another local group, there's value to that as well. So I'd like to see us get to a point where there's some black and white rules and definitions, and this is what we can say can and can't happen, but I think ultimately... But I think ultimately, things are going to probably not be so black and white. They'll be gray and there'll be times when we'll have to come back to you guys for some of this stuff. But I'd like to establish some guidelines of some sort and we could at least start fresh with it, we can vet it somewhat eternally before it gets to me. And just need, I guess, need y'all's input, county managers' comments, their thoughts on it.
Yeah, we really have two issues here. One issue is, you know, the utilization of the beach. And really, you're talking primarily there about 5K and 10K runs. And then we're talking about the possibility of having a half marathon that involves some of the roads, primarily Frederica going south from Sea Island on a Saturday morning in December. So, you know, my initial reaction about the 5K and 10K on the beach, if these really were charitable groups trying to raise money for a worthy cause and the run was to occur, you know, a 10K is going to take about an hour, hour and 15 minutes, you know. You know, started at 7:30 and you're done by 9:00, you know. Very few people other than the dog walkers, and they might enjoy, you know, sort of seeing what's going on. To me, that, I think that would be a good utilization of our resource. And again, I don't think we, you know, if we start it and it doesn't work out, that doesn't mean we have to continue it. If we have a bad experience, but, but you know, if you were started at Coast Guard and go down towards the village area, you know, you've got adequate parking for runners, you've got restroom facilities there. And theoretically, if they timed it correctly, it wouldn't adversely impact. And that's why I'm asking, what do you all think?
Are you limiting it to a run? I mean, I've heard paddleboards, I've heard wrestling matches, I've heard...
Well, I just, that was, I threw out, I have nothing against paddleboard races or sailing race or whatever. But, you know, I just, paddleboard really, you know, paddleboard, you're out in the water. You know, it's not like you're interfering with anybody that's going to the beach. You know, I'm thinking about the sand and the pathway, that people might be walking their dogs or having their morning coffees, you know. You'd have to have some, as Lisa said, some volunteers out there for crowd control. But, I don't, what?
You're not talking about quarantining off the beach, are you?
No, I mean, you have to have, you have to have a, you know, some sort of a route, you know, with flags or whatever. And obviously, they wouldn't want to run in the, they wouldn't run in the soft sand, they'd run in the packed sand.
The wrestling match thing you were talking about, the guy wanted to quarantine off a section of the beach and charge admission. I mean, but do we have anything that precludes somebody from having a run on the beach? I mean, I know we have an event permit they have to get or whatever, but do we have anything in the ordinance that now that prevents somebody from doing that?
Nothing that I've seen, I have to defer a meeting to the county attorneys on that, but I've not seen anything that would prevent it, other than if it was happening in a commercial activity or gathering over 100. But again, the public conduct permit seems to, doesn't seem to cover things on the beach. It just seems to cover everything else that's out there. But it doesn't really, it doesn't really approve or disapprove the event. It just makes sure that the people are following the different pieces of the ordinance that go along with public conduct permit about firearms and fireworks and signage and things like that. Just making sure that they're following county ordinances, not whether or not they can.
I'm trying not to overthink this thing. I'm just saying, I mean, if we try and write an ordinance for this, you know, congratulations. We just came up with the first 1,200-page ordinance to try and get every event. I mean, that's my only concern, but, you know.
I think what we need to do is, if you're familiar with the public conduct permit, if you're familiar with that, I think we just need to expand that. And, you know, we have all kinds of public events in Glen County where people have to go out and get a permit to do something out in, you know, public property, public rights away and what have you. And a lot of those events don't require or don't have an impact on the county in terms of police, public works, what have you. You know, we have a Sunshine Festival coming up, and there's a lot of work for public works, believe it or not. You know, they block off roads and they're out there cleaning, you know. But that's a whole different kind of a deal. But something like an organized, you know, I would think in terms of an organized event. Somebody comes to the county and they said, can we do this? I think in that case, we have an opportunity to say, yeah, you can do it, but you're going to have to provide this, this and this. And it may be that, it might be things that we know we need to do to control traffic for that event. Or maybe they need to put $250. I'm just saying, there's things that we need to consider. And I think staff are the ones that could probably tell us the biggest impact that it would have on them, regardless of the event. They could find a range of events and say, you know, if you guys want to move forward and allow marathons, regardless of the size, however long they run on the beach, you know, if we've got to mark that beach off, you know, we've got to help them do it, you know, make it happen with staff, with public works. You know, maybe we need to have a fee, or maybe, you know, we need to have requirements of them to, you know, the big golf event on Sunshine is because of them.
The RSM, yeah.
Yeah, RSM.
And the airport, the...
You know, those folks get out and, I mean, they arrange for parking places.
Yeah, the air show was the same deal. The county required them to have people to park, pay overtime.
But I think these organizers, you know, we need to think ahead of this and say, hey, what do we want to require the event organizer to do if they're going to have these events?
You're going to have to take them on a one-by-one basis. And basically, what you're talking about doing is making the public, and I'm not familiar with this thing, the public conduct permit process applicable to the beach?
I think that would be...
Is that what you're saying?
I think that would probably be the best.
And then recreation can deal with it on an individual basis?
Right.
I can tell you, we're going to have things that are going to come out of the woodwork we ain't ever thought about.
But the point is, who has the ultimate veto power over this type of thing? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I think it rests in Lisa's hands, and she needs to decide, you know, what an appropriate fee is based upon the size of the event and the needs, the needs of volunteers, everything like that. But do we want to let the county manager give the thumbs up, thumbs down? Or, I mean, I don't, as JR said, I don't think we should overthink it, but we also don't want to lose control of it.
Right.
So how do we maintain control? Just leave it in Lisa's hands along with a police chief and assistant chief Trout?
And have them appeal to the board of commissioners?
Let me use, for example, the city, the way the city does. The, we just had a high school class reunion down at Glen Academy. We wanted to block off Mansfield there at the school. So I feel, you know, we, 10-year reunion, 10-year reunion.
60-year reunion.
Well, I will say, I will say, I started in the last century. Anyhow, on that permit application, told everything about, well, of course, they had all kinds of questions. I mean, they knew what you wanted to do, but part of that was blocking off Mansfield. And on there, when I got that permit back, it said that the city would furnish the barricades, and they would be sitting out at the ends of the road. And I was responsible for setting them up and getting them back out of the road when we were done. And they gave us the timeframe we could do it, okay? I mean, so, so they had, I mean, it made an impact on the city. You know, they had to get somebody out there with those barricades and drop them off. But again, the game plan, I knew what we had to do to make it work for us. And so, but that thing went through, looked like it went to every department in the city. And everybody had a chance to make a comment, you know, well, this impacts here and there, and this is what they need to do. So it worked for us, it worked for the city, and I think we can do the same thing.
Yeah, I think Lisa's got a good handle on what needs to be done. I'm just wondering, you know, when it is that oddball application at an oddball time, who says no?
Well, I think the check valve is Lisa could holler at this guy. He says, hey, that's what we do.
And then he comes to the chairman.
Or, or he sends an email out to the commissioner and say, hey, we got it, this is a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Can you handle that, Lisa?
Sure.
Okay, let's go, let's go on to number two.
Are we looking at putting a monetary value on the impact of the county on the approval or disapproval?
I think it would depend on the event, that Lisa could come up with the relative cost per event, you know. We don't want to make money.
No, 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 no.
But we want to offset our costs. If we had to put lifeguards somewhere, or we had to have extra police officers there, you know, we should put that on the event. But Lisa can, she can do the math on that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like the air show, you're talking, could have been a hundred thousand dollars in cost to the county that we shifted over to the promoter. So I'm just saying, it's one of those that, you know, if it's...
Hopefully, the fun run will be a hundred thousand dollars.
Probably not a big deal, but we just need to kind of look at that, that, you know, whatever this, however this is handled, that we have a handle on the amount of money it's going to cost.
I think the more complicated one that we really do need to resolve here is this Sea Island half marathon. And is chief still here? Chief, has assistant chief Trout got a chance to look at the route yet?
There's been three routes provided and it's being reviewed currently. Actually, the application, the conduct on that application actually says specify what you plan to do. In this particular case, it's sort of disrespectful to anybody present. They've submitted three routes, basically asking us to tell them which is the best one. They need to tell us which route they're going to use and let us review it.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand. It's a complicated situation. Here's the deal, it's a first Saturday.
What a shock.
We have representatives from Sea Island and the organizational group that wants to run this half marathon. They've already advertised it on Sea Island, a little premature, and we've had a meeting about that. But the idea is, is it the same, Ella, to go out, rainbow, turn right, go up into Sea Island, come back down, take a left on Frederica and make your way to the lodge? The question is, is it all the way down Frederica? Is it around the roundabout? Or is it through the neighborhood behind the roundabout and then come out by the airport? So it's a little bit complicated. The ideal is, as Lisa and I discussed earlier, might be Sunday morning in the usual situation. But unfortunately, the community church is one of the busiest churches on the island, and there's no possible way we could do it on Sunday morning with the parishioners that go there and the number of cars. So we're really looking at a Saturday, and these things take, what, Ella, three hours? Something like, let's say, three hours.
Two hours and check.
So they would, it would start at 7:30, they'd spend about an hour or so on Sea Island. So now we're talking about 8:30 to 10:00 or so on Frederica Road on a Saturday morning, with them supplying the volunteers, with them paying off-duty police officers, and, you know, agreed, we'd have to solidify our route, chief. But I guess the question is, and the other thing is, that I would like to emphasize publicly, Ella, is that, and we mentioned this at our meeting earlier, you need to engage the St. Simon's runners, you know. This is upwards of 900 to 1,000 people. It's a big deal for the community, with the hotels and the meals and everything like that. It would redound to the benefit of the county to have these people here. But I think we need to make sure that the local runners are engaged in part of it, if we do it.
And we're reaching out now.
So, other communities do it, it may be an absolute nightmare. In which case, they can just yell and scream at me, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth the job.
They'll just call you, yeah.
What do you think, Lisa?
I wrote the three new routes with Ms. Kent's associates and person last week. It's, they're two busy areas, but there was one that seemed to me personally more doable than the others. But I haven't discussed that with chief Powell, so that, you know, that's just my perspective on that. One of my concerns, I guess, was that some of the route was proposed on St. Simon's to be on the sidewalk, because by the time you got to certain points on St. Simon's, your runners would be potentially spread out enough to, according, you know, to the folks with the race, be on the sidewalk, with an eight-foot wide sidewalk. And I just, I didn't feel very comfortable with that plan, that that was definitely going to be able to happen. I think that's a hope, but you know, that depends on how many runners you get. It's basically, I don't think you can count on that.
Right, right.
That's experienced talking, but you don't...
Right, but that's a good point, Lisa. And reality says, what they really want, they're running south on Frederica, but they want to run in the northbound lane of Frederica. So Frederica would only have half a lane for this hour and a half. And so there would be some requirement to mitigate the flow of traffic for that hour and a half, because we'd only have theoretically a southbound lane from the Harris Teeter area to the Kingsway-Federica intersection.
Let me ask you.
And I really, and the reason is, if you all think this is crazy or premature, you know, say no. But, you know, I...
Well, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, the route would have to be dictated by, if it's a half marathon, that means it has to be a certain length, right?
13.1 miles. That's why they do about, when you get on Sea Island, if you go from the guard gate out to the tip of Sea Island, let's say it's roughly four, four and a half miles. So if they do that and come back, that's about eight, maybe nine miles. Then they only need about four and a half, five miles of our roadway. So that mitigates some of the, you know, pain. So that's why it's just from Harris Teeter to the lodge.
Let me ask a question, a dumb question, and then I'll answer the dumb question. What is the liability to the county? What liability does the county have? And I would suggest all of it.
In regards to...
Just any, anything you could think of in the world. Somebody trips, falls and...
We have a representative of the competent organizers. Could you speak to that? What is the liability to the county?
Nobody ever sues us, so...
So we always carry general liability insurance in whatever amount is necessary. And there's different requirements for different cities. And so all the liability...
You've got the, okay, great.
Yeah, I was about to say, I mean, there are other runs, I mean, the city has...
All over the country, this...
Yeah, so that's, to me, that would be a big concern.
We have, we've got a real insurance, so these races, the score balls across the...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I mean...
Guys, I'm telling you, this is a bad idea. Shut down Frederica for an hour and a half. I'm just saying, okay?
There used to be one on St. Simon's over here, I thought, on the 4th of July weekend or something.
Well, there is. There's also a fun run on St. Simon's, but it's not up and down Frederica's northbound lane.
This is Commissioner Stanbaugh. I think this is a bad idea.
That's good. But can we continue exploring?
Hey, I'm, again...
I know, I know, that's the worst part. That's the worst part, but anyway. Chief, we'll work with assistant chief Trout.
In this, we check with our liability carrier and just see what exposure we may have here. And also, if we would consider the participants sign some sort of a release or a whole harmless or something, not that it'd be worth two cents if somebody really got seriously injured, but at least you'd have something to go on. But in my mind, from an insurance standpoint, I would certainly think that the county, I mean, you've got a bunch of runners going down out there, and they come up on a piece of rough pavement, and somebody steps on a crack and, you know, breaks a leg or something like that. I mean, they're certainly going to come back and say, well, I stepped on the county's crack here, you know, and broke my leg. If that crack hadn't have been there, I'd have won the race. So, I mean, that's the kind of, that's what I think Chairman was talking about here a minute ago. It's certainly an exposure there. And it's just, like you said, just the whole thing. You can't ever tell what's going to happen, but people come out of the woodwork with lawsuits.
There we go, there we go, Bob.
They do. They all have to sign a waiver or they're not able to participate. And if it would ever be of interest, I'd be happy to connect you all with other folks who have wrestled with these same issues in other cities where we've operated. I'm not sure what those discussions have been. Most of the cities in Portland have done these races before, and so I think they have kind of these standards in place. But we've had plenty of runners get injured. It just happens, it's part of it, but they sign these waivers. We've never had to dip into our liability insurance policy before.
Usually, a lot of this, they have a record for each event, but whatever the event organizer is, their liability insurance will include the county listed as an additional sure. I'm sure...
And the date of this is December 1st? December 1st.
How many runners do you anticipate having?
Last year, we had about 600 runners. We have decided to cap it at 1,000. And for context... And for context, a half a marathon is the only distance that would actually cross, that would actually enter St. Simons. The 5K, which is a part of the event, would never leave Sea Island property. And so we're actually talking about half of the race, so it's about 500 people. We've produced events, 2,000 people entirely on greenway, that's just as narrow as the sidewalk that's at mile, you know, 10, 11, 12 for this race, with people just going in one direction. So we've had experience utilizing sidewalks, utilizing greenways as necessary to minimize road impact.
What you going to do with them when you get them to the lodge?
We're going to have a big party.
Those that haven't passed out.
You have to run the race to be in the five...
You'd invite the chairman, though. The chairman can be part of the party.
Oh, I'll be running, what are you talking about?
So we'll work, I just want to make sure that you all felt, I think it would be a nice event for the community, and again, I emphasize, you have to engage the local track club. If you don't, it's going to be, I just can't tell you, I'm disappointed, I'll be, okay? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we did some of that last year, and one thing that's really neat about all the races, we have to have pacers, and those are people who enter the race for free, and there's usually about 40 of them. And we always tap into the local community, even if it's a race that's a destination event, we tap into the local runners, because they love being pacers for these events.
Good, thank you.
There you go.
That's right. Brunson will be, he'll be the rabbit.
All right.
What's the name of the event?
Sea Island Half Marathon.
Sea Island Half Marathon.
Okay.
That's original.
All right, anything else? You got your marching orders there?
Yes, sir.
You got your marching orders there?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor, you got anything for the good of the order? Thank you very much. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You want to say anything, we just, we love, we love having you here.
Well, thank you.
You're just, all right. How about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. So move it in.